Okay. I don't think I've heard of them.
Yeah, maybe. So it should be your first one, but she's not over here remotely, so I guess we'll start and see if needs to be. I call the order of the regular council meeting Monday, August 16th, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Next, I have a pledge allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now please approve the meeting notice.
Meeting was noticed on Friday, August 13th. Agendas were posted at the post office, library, city hall, and the city website.
You council acceptance of agenda?
I'd like to make a suggestion to move number 11 up to right after personal appearances place. And would that change our motion to accept the agenda?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Personal appearances, anyone who wish to speak on any of this not on the agenda. Okay, we will move on to the number 11. Which is, consider declaration recognizing police department employee John Dell Waller for organizing the 2021 National Night Out.
A manual motion to approve, you have to reread that, to approve, oh, I have to read it now. Declaration recognizing police department employee John Dell Waller for organizing 2021 National Night Out event.
I'll second.
Do we need to approve or read it, or do I read it first?
You can make it.
Oh, I would like to defer reading it to our police chief.
Well, thank you, it truly is an honor.
Come on, it is for me too.
I can't say enough, I thought this was very appropriate, John Dell was my right hand throughout this event, those of you who were able to attend know how much work it must have taken to organize such a night, so, and she, she's already starting on next year's event, so, that's just the way it is. So I'd like to, City of Edgerton Declaration of Recognizing National Night Out 2021 Lead Event Organizer John Dell Waller, whereas National Night Out was established to be an annual community building campaign that promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie, and whereas 2021 is the 38th Annual National Night Out, which provided a unique opportunity for law enforcement from the City of Edgerton and communities of Rock County to join forces to unite with the citizens that they protected service, and whereas there are numerous other organizations that assist our law enforcement departments that many citizens are unaware of, and whereas it takes great time and dedication to contact the countless organizations to request their involvement and contributions to this national event, and whereas these same organizations need to contact person be made aware of the event's expectations and be prepared for the event, and whereas it takes a special organized person to provide event attendees information, plan the event venue, and collectively unite all those involved to make a successful free community event, now therefore be resolved the City of Edgerton Common Council on behalf of our community and the surrounding communities wishes to sincerely thank John Dell Waller for her selfless time, energy, and expertise in coordinating successful, well-attended 2021 Edgerton National Night Out.
Thank you. Any discussion from the council?
Congratulations, we can talk about them.
Any other discussion? Make a bench. Move, roll call.
Let's prove it first, Chief. Don't have it twisted.
That'd be impossible.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Since you're already working on next year, so we'll expect that to be.
Oh, trust me, Chief.
Thank you.
How good can I be? Got a whole year to work on this one. Thanks again. Okay, we'll go back to normal order here and go back to the minutes from August 2nd. Motion approved. Which one did you get there?
Sarah.
Second.
Any corrections or additions?
Ladies first.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Next one is to consider approval of minutes from August 10th, Joint Council and Planning Commission meeting.
Motion approved. Second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Committee boards, finance, Candy.
Yes, finance meant this evening, motion to approve Billson payroll in the amount of
I'll second.
Any questions on the bills? Hearing none, roll call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
There were no license applications to approve, motion to approve public event packet for ice cold classics car and bike show with fireworks, extending park hours and waving fees in addition to extending the park hours to 10:30 PM, and we have asked Mr. Green to work with the fire department one week from today to make final initial, excuse me, initial planning, and then one week prior to the event to get the fire department sign off on the final plans.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, motion to approve public event packet for transportation Girl Scout patch event and waive the fees.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Event organizers are in the audience here.
We had a few questions earlier, but I think we have, Chief was able to answer a question.
Yes, we spoke on the phone.
Okay, hi, how are you? So I mentioned to them what the event was about.
Yep.
And about the Girl Scout patch, so if you want to add anything additional?
So, we are the owners of Truckers Insured right next to El Patron, and there is an organization out of Wisconsin, which I am a member of, Women in Trucking, and it's promoting diversity in the trucking industry and promoting female truck drivers in particular, and they've come up with a patch that is approved, not to be confused with a badge, but a patch that is approved with, by the Girl Scouts, and the girls can earn it with activities, and I've been working with the Girl Scout Council, Women in Trucking, on potentially holding this event here in Edgerton, it would be the Rock County and Dane County Girl Scout troops would be invited, there'll be a small fee, we'll just provide water, perhaps a snack, the event's going to be broken up into Dazies and Brownies, those are the K through second, and it'll only be an hour and a half, there'll be a half hour in between, and then it'll be the junior Girl Scouts, and that'll be third through fifth grade, we're going to invite a truck tractor driver, which is the first part of a truck, to come in with her semi, we're going to have an FCMSA, which is the Federal Motor Department's inspection sheet, each little girl has to fill out a truck inspection, and they will receive their patch. The event is officially only until about noon, from 9:00 to noon, and give us time to pull up a table or two that where you make sure the area's just how we left it. I did speak with Jim, the owner of the coffee shop, he was okay with that, and I spoke with the chiropractors, and all they asked is that we keep those few parking spots literally right in front of his door available for as few customers.
This is wonderful, I see you have about 30 estimated people, have you gotten good?
Well, I've been dealing with the council liaison, and basically we're waiting for today to make sure it's okay that we can put down October 9th, and then, but her experience has suggested about 30 kids, and that's also why we're breaking it up, and everything's in the morning, so that we're assuming parents are going to be mom or dad or somebody to bring the little Girl Scouts over, so this will give them the rest of their day, we're not interrupting their whole day, we're trying to be mindful of their time, so, yeah, and then we're going to let the Edgerton reporter know, the Janes focus that, and just kind of get as much press on it as we can, so hopefully it'll be an annual little Girl Scout thing.
Wonderful, wonderful idea.
You? Any further discussion with council?
I think it's lovely, I was a Girl Scout.
So was I.
My mom was vice troop leader for many, many years, so.
Very cool.
Roll call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you and good luck.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Okay, motion to approve public event packet for country edge and chili mania and waive the fees and split overtime costs for the police officers with the organization doing the event.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve temporary Class B license for Chili Mania, Inc. on September 10 and 11.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve service lateral bids to KS Energy Services in the amount of $130,604.40, which was the low bid.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a modification to Edgerton housing revival policy regarding number of bids required, altering it to requirement of at least one bid, but strongly encouraging multiple.
Second.
Any discussion?
I guess I would just add, this makes sense for homeowners, because if I'm not right, the, what's coming up next on the agenda, C and P only had one bid as well, for their projects as well, so, I'm in full support of going from two to one, especially now, maybe it's something if the housing and the labor market ever sorts itself out, maybe we readdress this, but it's hard enough to get one, which is right, because it comes through housing committee, that kind of thing, so, this is a good change.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve supersized facade grant for 102 West Fulton Street for tech pointing in the amount of $3,150.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And motion to approve supersized facade grant for 102 and 104 West Fulton Street for window replacement in the amount of $1,705.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that's it.
Thank you, we've got a couple things here from planning, some of the master control items.
All right, planning met with the 10th, August 10th, Wednesday last week, I'll make a motion to approve second reading and adoption of City of Edgerton ordinance 21-08, amend the comprehensive plan for unplanted areas north of Brilshire Junction Way and west of Dairyland Drive.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Burdick?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Make a motion to introduce and approve the first reading of the City of Edgerton ordinance 21-09, amending section 22.5031, sign for business limitations by changing the duration of the minimum rotation of message signs.
Second. Any discussion?
Is there any background, on promoting on this, or just the history of this issue?
Well, it's basically driven by the chamber who's now operating the sign and the sign vendor who is strongly recommending and has for quite some time that 60-second rotation is inordinately long, so the balance for the planning commission has always been with any signs that flash and are attention grabbing, is it too distracting, and so the question for you to contemplate is, is 30 seconds in that corridor where you don't have that long to see the sign anyways, is 30 seconds going to be distracting, and I think the planning commission concluded that you wouldn't, you can't see it probably for 30 seconds if you're doing it all, paying at all attention to what you're doing, so they didn't think that it would be distracting to drivers and it would allow for more messaging.
How many businesses have a sign right now that, you know, that this applies to?
I can think of three right now, there's the community sign, there's one on East Fulton Street, and there's one at the school.
Is there one on West Fulton coming in either by Black Hawk, the old Black Hawk building, is there one by the, for the fire department building, or is it down farther by the?
Oh, yeah, there's, yeah, it's up on the wall, a really tiny one, it doesn't have video or anything, on the old Black Hawk, I don't know if the fire department still uses it or not, but it's. Yeah, no, it's not.
There's nothing on it yet, it's not on it right now.
No.
Which right now it's on.
Sorry, just to clarify, this is to extend or shorten?
Shorten, shorten, it's 60 seconds now.
Sorry, yeah, I shortened, and then I just wanted to make sure that I.
Yes, 30 seconds would be the minimum, the minimal amount of time of sun, that suggests to see them, now, if you approve this ordinance.
Any more thoughts?
I don't think that's unreasonable, I mean, you don't want someone looking at a sign while they're driving for a very long.
This came a moment way back when, when, and I use the example for pushing for the long time, which a minute is more than, way more than long now, driving by Appleton, and watching all that light flashes, you're driving down Highway 41, it's pretty distracting, so, especially when there's a lot of traffic.
30 is good though, because it's not constantly changing, so you're not cordially distracted.
Right, that's the, that's the balance.
And with only a few right now, it's not too bad, but if we had two, three times as many of them, it starts to become more of an issue.
And as the tech, as the owner of the sign, do you program that in?
Correct.
You do, okay.
And Quiktrick was always shorting theirs up after, after a while, and I don't know if they had different people running them, but they always had quicker, quicker ads and now the back of, the long ads, to listen to changes probably. Anyone else?
Just, let me, say it again, I just lost started, they're going from.
60.
60 to 30.
30.
So, you could have something that flashes, you have the maximum, you're saying?
It's a minimum, it's a standard minimum, so it can be there for four minutes, and it probably will be on several times if they don't have a program to roll that often, but it's the minimum we regulate.
Got that, okay, I've only got one thing to say.
Then it stays there for a.
Sorry, I'm going to ask one other question, are there any other regulations in this ordinance about flashing and anything else that goes along with what you can present in that advertisement, essentially, do we have anything else outlined in that?
What in specific do you mean, I'm not.
I mean, do we have.
It can't flash.
It can't flash, okay.
No, it's the same as.
Steady, steady. That was, that was my, that was my, my question, yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Burdick?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Make a motion to approve the extraterritorial land division to create two lots on the corner of Jacobus Road and Edgerton Road, section 34, town of Albion for Allison.
Second. Any discussion?
It's, I don't know if this is important, but I think there's a typo for Jacobus Road.
Depends on which end of the road you read the sign. We've been getting that road many years.
So, by, so I live by there, that's why, because on my end, where I'm at, it's US, so.
The other end is AS.
There's precedent, Jensen Street by the Country Club used to be the same thing, down in the corner was EN, and up by the Country Club is ON.
I don't want to open a candle.
No, no.
I don't know how that works, okay? Okay.
That's A side.
Well, sorry.
It's okay.
We're only going to.
That's the sign I see all the time, so.
We're only going to divide on the A side.
Okay.
My house, they're going to change it to one or the other, because you're moving again.
Yeah.
Well, okay.
Just that question, it's, this is kind of a unique one for our interest, because it is so close to the city, and the city has, you know, other land on the other side of it, so, but really, this would make no difference if there were one home, homes or two there, if sewer ever went down Jacobus Road, it'd just be two more laterals, right? I mean, it's just.
Yeah, the reason that we are concerned about development within our mile and a half is our ability to expand a lot, the more units, housing units are, the more difficult it would be for someone to annex property, to wish to annex land, and for the city to expand logically, we can't serve this land with sanitary sewer, that's a huge impediment to its annexation into the city, I mean, if this were an absolutely undeveloped area and someone were to add houses, you should be really concerned, given the number of houses that are already out there, there's already a pretty big block for our expansion to that area, so that's why I think when the planning commission weighs that out, they're like, okay, it's another unit, but this also is now restricted, de-restricted because of the transfer of development rights. But this also is now restricted, deed restricted because of the transfer of development rights program they have in Albion, so this will not be restricted for no further development. So, once that was, I talked to the county about it, then it seemed less concerning to me.
Okay. Would that go away if it annexed?
Development rights, deed restriction.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And last motion to consider, or approve the extraterritorial land division to combine two lots on North Allendale Road, section 11, town of Fulton.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Period. I already did, I think we covered most of the items that we did in that combined, yes. Tree board? Bring them tonight?
No, I mean, nothing that, nothing that comes to mind. We met today at 5:30, but nothing that the general consensus to be worth.
Trees get planted this week, so. Historic Commission?
We met this evening at 6:00 PM. We talked about, we had to modify the colors for the vinyl windows that we approved in an earlier meeting for the Dinkelman House for the grants from red to tan based on availability and pricing. And then, there was also a vote on a new sign for the deco for the evening hours. So, I recuse myself from that vote. That, that was.
Thank you. Utilities?
Yes, utilities met on August 9th. We approved a couple overpayment refunds as well as billing credits. But the biggest thing to report was the 2022 water and sewer forecast. And it was discussed at the commission for 2022 not to have any, any increase in water or any, when I say increase, I mean, to pay more. Rate increase, thank you, not to generate more water. No rate increase for water and no rate increase for sewer. So, that was a good discussion and I did well. So, that's it from utilities.
Thank you. Next one is to consider mayor's recommendation for committee appointments. I have one, speaking of utilities, Todd Westcott also has application in the, in the package with nominee in for utilities.
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's nomination of Todd Westcott for utilities.
And also? Any discussion?
I've had a lot of experience with him as a legislative aide. He does his research, he knows policy up and down, he really does his research, so he'd be a great addition to maybe to the march.
He's a little accent on that.
I was gonna say, what else can we get on that?
The tree board's not listed on that application. He turned me down for that, though, I did ask him. Okay, the votes in the cycle for Todd for the utilities. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And there's still an opening on the tree board, so if anyone has someone that's involved in that, send them down. Next one is to consider declaration recognizing Edgerton native Steve Stricker as 2021 Ryder Cup captain.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
You can read it. City of Edgerton proclamation, recognizing Edgerton native Steve Stricker as the 2021 Ryder Cup captain. Whereas the Edgerton City Council congratulates Steve Stricker on being selected to be the 2021 Ryder Cup captain. And whereas Steve Stricker has been a role model both on and off the golf course to many Edgerton citizens. And whereas the City of Edgerton recognizes the numerous victories and achievements Steve Stricker has accomplished during his golfing career. And whereas Steve Stricker started his professional golf career in 1990 and joined the PGA Tour in 1994. Since joining the tour, Steve has had 12 PGA Tour wins along with seven PGA Tour championship, excuse me, champions' wins. And whereas Steve Stricker has been in the top 10 of the official world golf rankings for 250 weeks and has been part of the Wisconsin State Golf Association Hall of Fame since 2007. And whereas Steve Stricker silently gives back to his community through donations and volunteerism. Whereas the city council has the privilege to say Steve Stricker is from the City of Edgerton, Steve Stricker makes his hometown proud. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Edgerton hereby congratulates Steve Stricker on his many accomplishments, including most recently being named this year's Ryder Cup captain and takes place in his home state of Wisconsin.
Any discussion?
I would just add that one of the three symbols on Edgerton's tourism logo is golf, so Steve's rising profile only helps us out all the more.
Wonderful. And then, tournament is September 24th, the weekend of September 24th, so, post by hand. No further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And then, the next one is consider declaration recognizing volunteers who made 2021 National Night Out a success.
Okay, I am going to make a motion. I'm not asking to get out. A motion to, to approve the declaration recognizing the volunteers who made 2021 National Night Out a success and have Chief Kowalski read.
It's pretty good. No, thank you, it truly is.
We need a second first.
I'll second. Oh, Jim already did, give me two.
But he's part of the volunteers, he shouldn't have to read his own declaration. That's okay. It's truly, it's truly my honor to be able to put this on for the city. You know, everybody's been great. So, with that being said, the City of Edgerton Declaration recognizing the National Night Out, 2021 volunteers. Whereas the 38th Annual National Night Out provided a unique opportunity for the City of Edgerton and communities in Rock County to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country and promote cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas numerous known and unknown organizations play a vital role in assisting the local police and sheriff's departments through joint crime, drug, and violent, violence prevention efforts. And whereas these same organizations have a tremendous impact on our community through police partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation. And whereas in an effort to provide a single event for those to share knowledge and spread awareness of the services each organization provides, it takes a community of volunteers to collectively unite their time and energy to make a successful National Night Out. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the City of Edgerton County Council, on behalf of our community and the surrounding communities, wishes to thank, wishes to sincerely thank all the volunteers who selfishly, selflessly gave of their time and expertise to educate and demonstrate their contribution in making our community safe. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that in my experience that I've worked in that area, we have one of the best that I've seen, so.
I agree.
I just thought I should add that.
It's a very nice night to be out there. It really was, yeah.
And the fact that we haven't done it that many years as well. This is the second year that we've really had this big of a turnout for it.
When I first got here, so in my previous job as chief in Sock Village, I always thought it would be a great event and we had it. It was a lot smaller, the, the community wasn't as involved. When I got here, I made it my commitment to do this every year that I'm here as a chief. So, as well, as long as I'm here, count on something. So, and that's my commitment. Thank you.
We appreciate it. I think, I feel like if, that's the feedback that I get from most people in the community is that they feel like they can, our police department is an entity that they feel like they're comfortable with and that they want to, they feel comfortable engaging with, and I love that, I really love that.
That means a lot to me. Thank you.
I think that's important, now more than ever.
I agree, amen. Anyone else? Hearing done? Let's do a roll call.
I'm sure I already wrote it down. Candy Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, there are all the personal staff boards. I've got one thing I left laying in front of everybody that sent down here a couple weeks ago, so. Cheryl and I are gonna donate 250 and I'd like to challenge the council to match that 250 so we can get to at least the middle level.
You have to get more for.
As a group, you're saying, 250 as a group?
Right. Right.
Yeah, good clarification.
Unless you wanna hit the thousand, not on any.
The people that do the minutes don't know what this is for.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, mini golf in the garden, hospitals, first fundraising event for this year. We just happened to be out in the garden today and the working on it made it look really good for the, looks good all the time, but it's getting made up really nice now for this golf outing thing here, but. It's just something that Cheryl used to work there, so, used to. So, we, we thought we would at least fill up the area.
You've served the 250, huh?
Yeah.
I'll throw 50 on board.
Are they raising money for something specific or just in general? Do they always do, this is the first I, I guess it's just maybe I've never seen.
The veterans, fun, it's better than that.
That's what I, that's what I, okay, cool. Awesome, always awesome.
I would say, I would recommend you come in here if you wanna take care of this some other time. This one is before.
Well, you got a little on.
Yeah, it's a great cause, I'm signing it, yeah.
I'm, I'm in with Mr. Burdick.
I, I knew the joke.
Yeah.
Me too.
I think we can probably do that.
Sure. Okay, yes.
So, will you indicate as a business thing, will it be Edgerton City Council or how will you do this?
I think it should be from the council.
Council, okay.
If we don't let anybody else get in, except for us, we'll sell.
And so, and so.
Howard.
If you want to do this, we, the contribution to come.
You don't want something to come out of the night.
To the City of Edgerton, people write the check and see who we know who's in. So, then we can write, give our, write a check to the City of Edgerton if we so choose. Thank you.
Okay.
I don't know if we need to get to the thousand, the recognition on the WCO radio spot.
Oh, yeah, nothing like upping it all the time. That's about bait and switch.
That's the only end of the thing. If you even wanna get on the radio, then.
Okay, I'm up to honor now, you're honored. I like if I don't have change.
That's all I had.
During before he gets us up to the one that ain't on here.
I'm not sure if this counts as staff reports because it filters into my business, but I wanted to tell Howard and staff thank you very much for all the work they've done taking out the storm windows and putting them back in and just all around, just being fantastic.
You're very welcome.
Okay, the other thing I would, and I mentioned this to her a moment ago, but I'll also mention to you, Howard, the, and you've probably seen that the land by the compost site, which Mr. Clark says, he agreed to let the neighbors, Tammy and Jason Wilkinson, plant sunflower seeds and they're all popping up. So, it's a very large area of sunflowers that if you have a chance, you may want to take a look at it. And Wilkinson's did it just because they like sunflowers and it was an empty space and.
It's a good photo spot.
It's a good photo spot. They're not as large as some of those very, very large sunflowers, but they're big and they're, there's a lot of them.
That's Instagram where they live.
Yeah, I, I thought it would be very cool for the city to maybe take a picture and put it on our website and, on Facebook.
It would actually be probably a very, a good photo maybe for the visit to Edgerton.
Where is it? On the other side of the fence?
So, if you go into the cemetery, go in like you're going to the compost, settle off before you get to the compost.
That's where Tim was spreading out the compost there, just beyond the cemetery, it's that old area.
Okay, yeah.
I'll have to go check it out, that'd be lovely, yeah.
Anyone else have anything?
As long as we're on the compost, I was just gonna say, Saturday, there must have been a whole lot of damage, storm damage, because I was out there and the guys, they were pushing a hundred guys at just about close time, so, and not one was from out of town. So, apparently it's catching on that they can't come out there, so.
Yeah, which also, I have a question about that too. So, for the compost with the storms, somebody had asked or had made a comment that there were a lot of limbs broken from their tree, but they're not able to take that out to the compost site, is that correct? Because their limbs, they have to wait for the pickup or?
I don't know, there's brush drop off.
Well, there is brush drop. Okay, you didn't know that, though. Same hours as the compost. I don't know where he got that from, so.
Two separate kinds and things.
Well, he's usually a type of that stuff, so I don't know. I had misinformation or black and so, told my.
I left all mine for the Chipper's, so they gotta do something. I love them a lot. They appreciate it.
Will you keep us posted, Howard, therefore, when it comes close to deer hunting season if you need help with the compost site?
Sure. I'll let you know. Yeah, Chris will be right on it.
I can stay out of it very much.
I'll let you know.
We can just be on our next meeting. Our next meeting's on a Tuesday, September 7th, so I will volunteer to.
How far in September?
I will volunteer to cover the hours for two hours again on September 6th. 11 to, 11 to 1, it worked out pretty good for the eight people I had that day. They were happy, so. That's why you've been there, it's your fault. Anybody else have anything? For motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.
Good meeting.